Good morning. I'd like to call to order County Council's agenda meeting for Tuesday, February 2, 2021. But please rise. We pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. As in past meetings, we will accept public comments during our council meeting on Wednesday night, both at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting. Comments at the beginning of the meeting should be related only to items that are on the agenda, and then comments at the end of the meeting can be upon anything that your heart desires. Comments can be called into 610-891-4931. We will transcribe them, or you can email them to publiccomment@co.delaware.ca.us. Please include your name and address so that it will be read into the record. The first item on the agenda calls for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 20, 2021. Any questions or comments from council on this agenda item? All right, hearing none. The next agenda item is going to be a COVID/vaccination update. We have Ms. Halt and Dr. Mahoney, who will appear tomorrow night. They asked that they could do it just on Wednesday night, given the fact that they're pretty busy with their vaccination efforts, and I thought that was a better use of their time. So I apologize if that causes anybody else's issue, but we will hear from them tomorrow evening for an update. Any questions on that? All right, hearing none. Agenda item number six calls for a second reading and consideration of adoption of ordinance 2021-1, amending section 6-20G1 of the Administrative Code regarding residency of county employees. Mr. Martin, would it be appropriate to read the title of the ordinance and a summary today, and then we'll do it again tomorrow?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Ordinance number 2021-1, in ordinance, the county of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending section 6-20G1 of the Administrative Code regarding residency of county employees. While the background provides that the county code as it currently stands requires county employees to be residents, and that the section, as currently stated, has in the past restricted the county's ability to attract sufficient qualified employees. So as a result, this amendment is intended to provide more flexibility. It provides in substance that notwithstanding the previously referenced section, persons who are not, at the time of hire, residents of the county, shall still be eligible to be employees, but shall establish their residency within three months of their start date. That the executive director, based on recommendations of the Director of Personnel, may grant an extension of such three-month period if he deemed, he or she deems, necessary to maintain a qualified workforce, where what a good-faith effort by the employee has demonstrated to establish residency. That three-month extension may be continued for a maximum period of 12 months, and beyond 12 months, a further extension is permitted with the approval of council up to an aggregate of 24 months for such approval. It also provides that council may adopt, may exempt certain categories or classifications of personnel from the residency requirement provision if council deems it necessary to allow the county to hire a sufficient number of qualified employees. But that class exemption shall expire in 24 months unless it were to be further extended by council. The ordinance continues that if an employee is required to be in compliance with this section and is not at the time of enactment of the ordinance, such employee may establish residency consistent with the provisions of the amended residency requirement. This provision is not applicable to employees who are covered by the civil service system. They are covered under state law, and the ordinance takes effect on the 10th day after its adoption. So that's the summary.
I know we're going to discuss this tomorrow, so I will keep my comments brief. But for members of the public who are going to be here today and not tomorrow, I want to reiterate what we said previously, which is that this is effectively memorializing what has been past practice in Delaware County, but has been in violation of the code. And we think it's not good practice to be having common practice that violates the code. And so there's always been this understanding where folks who got a job within the county had a certain number of months to establish residence, and there frankly have been, you know, full-on carve-outs. So that, you know, I think this ordinance allows for us to memorialize that, but also maintains what I at least personally believe to be a sound policy to encourage people to live in Delaware County, for all the reasons we've talked about in the past and all the reasons we'll talk about tomorrow.
Well, I'll keep my comments brief as well, because I'm sure we'll hash this out tomorrow. But I continue to have misgivings about this amendment and indeed the underlying section of our administrative code. I have continued to have conversations within our staff, and I do not, I don't see the merit in this residency requirement at all. I do see the merit in a preference, a hiring preference, that you would want people from the county to be working for the county. But a blanket rule requiring residency, whether it's right away, or after three months, or after 24 months, I think harms our competitive ability to hire the best people. And it does not bring benefit that outweighs that. So I would like to suggest that we move to eliminate the hiring, the residency requirement. However, I did hear from several of my colleagues and from some of the staff members with whom I've been speaking, that there is merit in some of the director positions living in the county. And I hear that and understand that. So I would, I would suggest keeping the residency requirement for the director position, that level, but allowing for a waiver, so that if extraordinary talent comes that is a mile over the border, that we could still get that extraordinary talent. So that is my position, and I'm sure we can talk about it more tomorrow.
You have any other questions or comments from council? All right, we'll move on to agenda item number seven then, which calls for the approval of resolution 2021-1, authorizing the establishment of the Delaware County Department of Health. And I think Mr. Lichtenstein might be presenting this, or perhaps Mr. Martin?
I can go ahead and present. Bill, unless you wanted to?
Air DJ.
Okay. This is basically following the steps required under the statute for establishing a health department. The first thing that had to happen was there needed to be a certificate of approval from the Pennsylvania Department of Health, which was received last week. The second step is for council to adopt this resolution, authorizing the establishment of the Department of Health, at which point notice will then be given to the state of the establishment. And then after that, there are a number of other steps, the appointment of the Board of Health, you know, and, you know, hiring of staff, getting the department up and running. But this is the first step under the statute, which has to be done to start that process.
Thank you, Mr. Lichtenstein. Anything to add, Mr. Martin? Any questions or comments from council? Dr. Taylor? I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just know you've been working on this so hard.
Yes, no, thanks. This is just a really important first step, and I was really excited to see that we got our certificate approval last week. And thank you, Mr. Lichtenstein, for all your work in putting together kind of all the legal resolutions and everything we need to have in place to move everything forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council?
Well, I can't help but just acknowledge Dr. Taylor, Rosemary Halt, John Lichtenstein, Grace, I mean, what an incredible, to get us right, to get us here in the midst of the while fighting the pandemic. All those people were also working on our testing and our vaccine while they were moving this forward, and the steering committee. It's, it's pretty extraordinary. So, thank you, and congratulations to all of us.
Yeah, another big, another big step along the path. All right then, we'll move on to, if there's nothing further, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, which eight, which calls for the approval to accept a grant from the Pennsylvania Commission on Climate and Delinquency for the time period October 1, 2020 to September 30, 2023. And we have our District Attorney, Mr. Stolzheimer, here. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. This is a very simple matter. We've, this is the grant that funds the Office of Special Senior Victim Services. We have been granted this money again. If you don't mind, though, I would just like to give you a little heads up about this office. It's a very small office for employees who work off-site. This actually used to be a nonprofit organization that kind of went belly-up in 2015 and was absorbed into the Delaware County DA's office. My predecessor did a really horrible job the last two years of her term managing this office. We spent an ungodly amount of time since I came into office trying to understand what was going on down there, and then trying to unravel the finances. We have had great support from the Controller's Office. We have now brought in an outside auditor. We think we've got a handle on it, but we're going back to the PCCD and make sure that we've got everything correct. But that has gotten us thinking about how best to manage this going forward. And I did want to let you know that we are in discussions with Women Against Rape, which is probably the oldest Delaware County crime victims organization, about taking over this function. They would assume the grant and assume all of the supervision of the office, assuming County Council later this year decides that that is a smart thing for us to do. So I'm happy to answer questions about it. But right now, we've been given this money, which will keep the office funded for the next couple of years. It is my hope that we could actually turn this back into a nonprofit status, where it will be properly supervised, and the work will not become political, as I think it did over the previous two years before I came into the office.
So could I ask, it looked like the four employees that are paid out of that grant are paid for half-time. You know, it looked like 16, 20 hours a week. Would that, if they moved out, do they have other duties in the DA's office?
No. I mean, what happens is there's two actual grants, one from PCCD and one from the feds that fund all of this. So they work full-time, but what we have to do is keep in a, in a, in a copybook almost form, the amount of time they do on each different grant, and then send that information into the county to reimburse the county from each of these two individual grants for their salary and also for their benefits. So it's a very mind-numbing way of trying to actually do this administratively. And that's part of why this completely fell apart in 2019 and 2018, because nobody was doing that work. So we actually owe the county money from these two grants. But they are full-time employees doing this work, supposedly helping senior citizens who are victims of crime better access the restitution and other things that are offered through our office.
Mr. Stolzheimer, if this were to move to the Women Against Rape, would the mission of serve then change? Would they no longer be supportive of senior victim services? And if that is the case, do we have some notion as to who might pick up that, that work?
No, great question. The Women Against Rape is really misnamed at this point. It's one of the things that their board is, is working to correct. They do a full range of victim services, no matter what type of crime was committed, or the age or gender of the victim. They are more than happy to take over the function of this senior victims operation to offer those services, particularly to senior citizen victims. And they will be essentially adding these staff people to their current mission with a focus on senior citizens who are victims of crime. I think it will actually add a better component, having these people supervised by people who are offering these services all day long, instead of us who don't even think about them sometimes because they're, they're not part of our, our office. Does that answer your question, sir?
It does. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? All right then, moving on to agenda item number nine. This calls for the approval of Addendum A to a professional services agreement between Mission Partners Group and, I'm not sure who, presumably us. And we have Mr. Stolzheimer here to present this one as well. Maybe take this, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm understanding this one all that well.
You got it. You might remember, Mr. Chairman, every year, the DA's office for the last 20 years has been doing a Safe Schools Summit. We decided, even previous to the pandemic, but I think it was actually timely with the pandemic, not to do that, but to actually try to build something based on the last successful Safe School Summit, which is this idea from the education community in Delaware County, that we need to do a better job of figuring out how we can deliver mental health and behavioral health services from outside county providers through the schools. So they're very interested in having that conversation. Dr. Taylor and Mr. Madden have been involved in putting this together. We did an RFP and hired this great group of people who have been doing the initial interviews, are getting a great response. But as you can probably guess, with all of the challenges of scheduling and technology right now, the costs are already exceeding a little bit by the contract we gave them. And this is all grant money that was not through PCCD, but through the Department of Education. It's sort of a legislative grant. So we just want to make sure that they're fully compensated going forward. Our hope is to have a report to Dr. Taylor, Dr. Madden, or Mr. Madden and the task force, or the group of people who have overseeing this initiative. By October, we can hopefully present to County Council the results of this study. That's, that's our goal, and that's why we need to increase the funding by $4,000 at this time.
And to clarify, Mr. Chair, because the prior contract had been approved by council, the increase requires council approval, even though it's relatively de minimis?
Got it. Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
All right. I would, the only thing I'd like to say is, is, I apologize. It's, I'm on my phone doing this. I'd like to just thank the DA's office for looking for ways to move victim services. I mean, I understand the administrative hassles that they've had to deal with, but I think there's also a really great message to our community, especially victims who also sometimes are victimized, even as they are also being looked at for potential criminal behavior of their own. So to be able to move this out of the DA's office, I think will make it accessible and a really welcome resource to people who might be concerned about that. So I think it's a great step, and I know all the reasons driving it, but I applaud the DA's office for looking at it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you very much.
There's nothing further than we will bid adieu to Mr. Stolzheimer. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 10, this calls for the approval of agreements, contracts, amendments with the human services providers of services as per the attached list. And we have Ms. Garrison with us this morning. Good morning.
Good morning. The first two are requests to issue, request for proposals, both the Children's Youth Services Department within Human Services. The first is for the Safe Care Services. This was initiated with the Comprehensive Treatment and Recovery Act. And basically, what it says is any child that is under a year old that's been exposed to substances, either through the parent's illegal drug use, or even through prescription medication, has to be evaluated and monitored. So we're asking to issue an RFP so we can find a provider that has obviously knowledge in the medical field to oversee this program. The second request proposal is of a current service we are doing for transitional housing, but we felt appropriate to issue an RFP to see if there's other options out there for providers. This is for individuals who are families who are either experiencing homelessness or on the brink of homelessness. And this assists them to have housing services with a case manager and so forth, to make sure they have stable housing. Just of note is with Children's Youth Services, just because I think this is a great statistics, we have never placed any child because their family is homeless, because we've always been able to find other services for them. The next request is to submit an application for the Systems of Care Grant. Last session, we, council agreed to accept the funds we received for the current year. This is for the next grant. It's $275,000, up to a four-year term, or each year up to four years. We would like to use these funds, if our submission is approved, and if provided, we provided the grant, to assist with families that are coming through our systems for mental health services. This is geared towards children. We have found that oftentimes, to have access to our system is a little bit confusing. So we've looked at having a child peer specialist, as well as a family peer specialist, and as a navigator, just to assist individuals, obviously when they're coming in our system, they're in a time of crisis, to connect them with the proper folks within Human Services to get them to the treatment they need. The next two requests are to accept funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for the opioid housing initiative grant. Council did approve a, the acceptance of a no-cost extension for the second year of the grant, which ends September 29 of 2021. The state has now added an additional $155,478 to that, so it asks permission to approve, accept those funds. Additionally, for the fiscal year, December 1, 20 through September 30 of 21, which is year three of the grant, we have been given $699,588. So it asks for permission to accept that. Both of these funding streams are to assist individuals who are struggling with opioid and similar dependence and finding, and finding housing. Oftentimes, it's difficult for a variety of reasons, whether it be a criminal history or so forth, that they can't find housing. So this is system funding, stable housing. The next request is to enter an agreement with Community Action, who is the provider that has been doing this program for Human Services for the period of the second grant, second, excuse me, the third year of the grant, for the $699,000. Additionally, we ask to amend the contract with Cornell Labor Access in the system, Children's Youth Services. This is to add the global positioning, house monitoring, predominantly used by juvenile court, but Children's Youth Services can use that as well. And then the next request to amend the contract with diversified treatment alternatives, this is just to reflect their current per diems. They did send us an updated list of per diems after the contract was approved. So this is to reflect their current rates. And finally, I ask to enter into agreement with the listed early learning resource center providers for the subsidized childcare program.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison. Any questions or comments from council?
Sandy, just a minor one. Why the contract with, just probably a really easy answer for this, for Community Action Agency, why isn't that for the total, including the extra amount that we're getting from the state? Why is it just the initial amount?
Their current contract, I believe, includes, I can double-check, but my understanding is their current contract includes the funds from year two. This is now year three, and we've been trying to have contracts in Human Services mirror the grants, if it is a grant contract, or contract associated with the grant. We've tried to have the time, the dates mirror what's the grant has. So instead of running the normal fiscal year, just to stop confusion around.
Okay, so the $155,478, that would appear...
That should be in their current contract. I will confirm that for tomorrow, but it should be in their current contract, it's my understanding.
Okay.
All right, if there's nothing further than, thank you, Ms. Garrison. We'll move on to agenda item number 11, which calls for an update on the Federal Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And we have Ms. Garrison and Mr. Lichtenstein here to present this.
As councils are aware, we did, as a county, have direct funding for the rent relief program, and $16.9 million. We have been meeting internally, myself, Mr. Lichtenstein, and then Jessica Fink, who's our Dalton Family Services Administrator, as well as Linda Hill, with the Director of OHCD in the county, to develop what we feel would be an appropriate plan for the utilization of these funds. What we'd like to do, and what we're looking at, but we want to update council where we stand, is to house the program internally, to hire potentially consultants to oversee it, and then have temp staff come in and do the balance of the work, since we don't have anywhere in the county bandwidth to do this program. Again, we would like to maintain it in-house. We have been talking to Widow Brian, who is the consultant that we utilize for the carriage funds, to see if they have any insight into what they've seen work in other counties. We have been also talking to the courts. I mean, Mr. Martin, I believe, has been talking to the courts about having this also connected with the eviction program, to have those individuals streamlined into this, and hopefully reaching a agreement with the landlord, so these individuals are not convicted. We are still, as I said, developing the specifics of the plan. We are looking at possibly using an outside payroll vendor that's currently using Human Services for our early learning resource program. We've been in discussions with the Controller's Office to make sure they are in agreement, and preliminary, you know, Ms. Phillips doesn't agree. It's just a matter of making sure we have controls and so forth in place. In addition to the federal money, we also are receiving state funds, and Mr. Lichtenstein has more detail on that. We're not sure of the exact amount. I will turn it over to him.
Yep. The one other thing, just adding to what Sandy said, is that Frank Vilada has been spearheading, getting, looking at, there are outside dedicated software platforms to do rental relief programs in general, and, and that are even, you know, the, the providers of those programs have been pivoting pretty quickly to make specific software solutions that can take some, take a, take, take the, something from an application all the way through to processing at the county to fund disbursement. So we've had demos from two different software companies, and we're also considering if there's anything else out there that we can use to support it in-house. In terms of the state, it appears, and again, this is based on the current bill in the Senate, which has not been passed, that the state is going to simply pass through all the money that the county would have gotten if the counties had simply been given the full amount of the federal money on a pro rata basis. The way the formula worked is the county, the $16.9 million represents 45% of what the county would have gotten on just a straight per-population pro rata basis, which means that what the state would be passing through is 55%, which would be over 20 million, if that's in fact how the state interprets the statute and how it's coming through. So, you know, more to come on that. If that does happen, we will have, you know, a very substantial amount to push out for rental relief. The complications from that is the state program does have specific reporting requirements back to the state. So we'd in fact have two pools of money for the same program. It doesn't look like the state has put substantially greater restrictions on the use of the money, other than restricting program costs to 2%, as opposed to the 10%, which is allowed under the federal legislation. So I think there's, you know, once we confirm exactly what we're getting from the state, and when the money is coming in, there's going to be some more work to try to figure out how to coordinate a program, which has to get, again, two sources of funds, two different entities to which we're reporting, both of which for the same function.
If I could add two points. One is relating to the courts. There's approximately in the range of 600 to 800 pending eviction proceedings in the county at different levels of adjudication, whether they're in mediation or before a magistrate, district court, or in common pleas. The preliminary sense of the people organizing the program is that it will make sense to provide a priority to landlords and tenants who are in process prior to January 31st, prior to this past weekend. The reason is there's certain bona fides and legitimacy to the claims, because they've already started in the courts. If we're going to utilize these funds as provided for by the regulations, one benefit would be to clear out pending eviction matters that are in the courts. There's a synergy there in terms of benefiting the courts by clearing out their dockets. But I do think that that priority only makes sense up to essentially last weekend, because we don't want to be in a situation where we are artificially forcing people to start eviction proceedings in an attempt to, to get to the front of the line. The other point that, that either John or Sandy may elaborate on, and I think it's important to council to understand, is the federal regulations here provide a requirement that the recipient of the funds needs to allocate those funds out to the benefit. out to the beneficiaries within a relatively short period of time. There's a recording requirement, if I recall, John, it's the end of September?
Correct.
You should elaborate on that.
Yeah, the, the way, the way the federal regulation works is that as of the end of September, they will take back any unspent monies and then reallocate it back only to the counties or to the entities which have spent at least 65%. So they won't take, they won't make you pay back money you've spent already, but if the program hasn't spent at least 65% as of September 30, you know, we would not get any additional funds. And then the deadline for all spending is the end of this year, although there are provisions to allow Treasury to extend it for another 90 days past that. I'm not sure on the state side, I don't know if they are using the same, I, I would have to look. If they're not using the same September 30 number, I know sometimes the state likes to, you know, as they did with their cares program, back things up by 30 days. So they may be looking at an August deadline, although I'll have to confirm in the legislation. But in either case, they're looking at a very quick spend to get, to get the, the initial block of money out.
And it's also worth noting that the federal law allows for an allocation of up to 10% of the funds received for payment of what I'll generally call administrative cost. I don't think that's the phrase that's used, but as Sandy references, the team's intent to talk about bringing on a consultant and bringing on contract employees, new software, et cetera, those would all be anticipated within and perhaps well within that 10% benchmark that could come out of the funds to administrate the program.
Yes, a couple of questions to you. Is that number, 600 to 800 evictions currently in process, is that out of the ordinary? Is it exponential? Do you have a feel for that?
I, I don't have any precise comparison from prior years, but clearly it's, it's at a higher velocity than you normally see.
Okay. And the approach of hiring basically a temporary organization with a consultant and temps, I think is wise, given we all hope that this extraordinary need would be, wouldn't last forever. How do we, do you have a sense of how many people that is, about where they would operate out of? Do we, do we have space for that?
Sandy?
Sure, we would, our preference would be having operator Human Services. We've been talking about having a walk-in site at our office in Upper Derby, as well as the office in Edison, which are the youth's house, to have places on either end of the county. Is that was one of the issues we've heard with the prior rent relief program, was just getting the documentation to the provider that it was difficult for some residents, understandably so. We do have the space here, and we could make sure the individuals have the equipment they need and so forth. We've talked about possibly, I would say, maybe between five and nine temporary staff, depending on the volume. Obviously, a large part of that's going to depend on what, what comes with the state monies. If that's to the estimate we think it may be, then we need to reevaluate how many staff are needed.
And my last, another question is like the amount and the parameters of the grants, I guess we're calling them, or, or allocations, is that set by, by our program? We have the, do we have the flexibility to say how much goes to each family and, and, or landlord?
That's my understanding, I don't know if John and Bill want to correct me for more. My understanding is we have the ability to set the parameters as we develop the program, which I think is what makes this, I hate to say better, but better than the prior rent relief program.
Another point would be that priority needs to be given to, to renters whose incomes are at 50% or less of adjusted media income, medium. And, and we can utilize the program for renters up to 80%. So it's, there, there's a preference, 50%, 50% or less can be used for 80% or less. So that in terms of establishing maximum benefit levels, you know, the, the county team needs to take into consideration what is the likely rental level of a family at that income level. You know, the, the funds are limited, so we don't want excessive amounts to go to one particular renter, but we need to have enough flexibility. The payments can go back as far as the middle of March of 2000.
Wow, okay.
And prospectively to a maximum three months going forward. And then the last point I would make is that the program would be structured so that any landlord that would be accepting funds would be doing it in full satisfaction of all rental amounts due on that property with that, from that tenant up to the time the resolution is achieved. So we want to make sure we don't have a situation where a landlord is taking a big check from the county and then suing for eviction anyway, arguing that there are late fees due or there are penalties associated with the lease. So it's, it's a lump sum payment, which would be in full satisfaction. Last point, in addition to rent, funds can be used for utilities. So that there's also, again, utilities only on behalf of renters. So this doesn't open up another piece of the program for homeowners who are behind on their, on their utilities. That's not covered by this, but renters who are behind on their utilities. And again, the underlying premise is a program designed to keep people in their homes and to avoid disruption or homelessness.
My last comment slash question is, are we making sure that we design this program to specifically support and reach out to non-English speaking renters and renters who are going to have trouble verifying income, you know, who might be in a cash economy?
Well, I, I do know that, and Sandy or John may jump in, that the software that we are considering that people would interact with remotely would be, have multiple language options and would cover all the, the major language subgroups within the county, in addition to English and Spanish. In terms of staff, that would be something that, that's a challenge that we'll have to work through.
And, sorry, Elaine, your second question went to, I, I, sorry, in addition to language?
So income verification.
The income verification, we are waiting, the initial guidance from Treasury actually was requiring some form of hard copies for income verification. There is notices up on Treasury's website saying we're releasing more FAQs and more guidance coming soon. There's a hope that they will allow self-certification on that, but at the moment, we still have FAQs out there that say you need to get some form of income verification. So we'll have to wait to see what the final regs are to work through that.
Okay.
And I do know that, that I think yesterday Congresswoman Scanlon and the other congresspeople from the surrounding counties submitted a letter to, I think, Treasury asking for more flexibility in several areas for that, this program, including that one.
Okay, that's good to know. And I know I said that was my last comment, but I have just one more. And that is, there's difficulty, I know you know this, but in getting the word to some of these subgroups, some of these recipients, that this is out there and available to them and how to actually apply. And even when they try to apply, applying the right way. So I, you know, some of this funding, it should be, can we use it for, I mean, I'm, I'm calling it marketing, but it's not quite that sophisticated. It's more like getting to this places where these people will get, you know, some help and understand what's available.
There is, sorry, go ahead, Sandy.
So I know we did discuss that somewhat yesterday in our one meeting, and I think that definitely is on our radar and something we're well aware of. I know Human Services luckily has a wide range of providers, including multicultural family services in the county that can help with this population that maybe doesn't speak English and doesn't know how to get to the proper systems and make sure that they are applying and are aware of it, and also having individuals on site, I think, will be helpful as well because if people are not sure how to fill it out, they can come in and we would assist them in doing that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sounds like it's really shaping up.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right. Thank you, Ms. Garrison, thank you, Mr. Lichtenstein. Moving on to agenda item number 12, and this calls for the authorization to purchase four hybrid minivans, and we have Mr. Hudek here to present this. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Zidic. This request, if approved, is to replace four vehicles in CYS. Two were a result of accidents, that the vehicles were totaled, and the other two are replacement of mini vans with 100,000 kid miles on them. You can imagine the, the condition of the inside. These hybrids are actually plug-in vehicles, which means that the gasoline motor doesn't work as hard to charge the hybrid battery up. They actually have plugs, and sticking with the initiative of putting charging stations in some of the CYS locations, it will also save some, some extra gas by having the, the minivans charged by the, by the pedestals, by the EV chargers. This, this is, the purchase is done on CoStar's contract, and Vidian is actually in the county. One other thing is that the state's providing about 85% of the money. I think the county portion's about 15. This isn't on a yearly capital request due to that reason, and we basically wait for, I wait for Ms. Garrison to let us know how much the state wants to give us to replace vehicles each year. And then we're kind of in a conundrum to get the vehicles delivered by the end of the state fiscal year. So this request is important, that it be approved or so that I can get them ordered and that we can have them delivered before the end of June.
And I think we got an analysis offline that showed that on sort of an average amount of usage per year basis, that the savings on gasoline essentially offset the increased price for the hybrid versus the gas version, is that, is that right?
Yes, Mr. Lazarus provided that for us. And we, we should be able to do some more in-depth detail with the comparisons. It's just been a kind of couple crazy weeks around here, and like I said, thanks to Mr. Lazarus, he showed the, the offset of the cost. And, and there again, like I said, I believe we'll save a little bit, even more gas as long as the vehicles are, are charged through the charging station and not relied on by the gasoline motor to charge them.
My one question on that, that summary we received was that it looked like the CoStar's cost would actually be less. Now, would that have been the case for either the gas or the hybrid? So both of those numbers are down by about 6,000?
Exactly. I, I don't have the cost of a regular gasoline engine on the CoStars. I only quoted the hybrid, being that we were moving that way. And there again, just been a crazy week, so I appreciate Mr. Lazarus's help in getting me something. But I, I can get it, hopefully get a cost comparison for tomorrow night, and I can try and give you the cost of the regular gasoline engine on the CoStars program for tomorrow.
But the takeaway was essentially that the cost of the county is going to be more or less flat.
Exactly.
To, and certainly in terms of a mileage, you know, gasoline economy and, you know, sort of impact on greenhouse gases, we're certainly doing better.
Yes.
Mr. Hudek, you mentioned that the state provides 85% of the cost of this. Are there, are there limitations on what we could buy? I mean, presumably, we couldn't buy four Bentleys and have the state pay 85% of that, could we?
I don't believe so, but there, I'm, I'm not familiar with how the state funds the CYS purchases. Like I said, I just kind of asked Sandy, you know, is there money? We need to replace vehicles. Her and her team work on the state, and then they get back to me and say, hey, we can spend this much on vehicles. I, I'm not familiar with the ways the state does that.
All right, and you know, I'm conscious of the fact that it is taxpayer dollars, whether it's state tax dollars or local tax dollars, but if there would be, if there would be a yet greater savings to the county, for instance, if we got an all-electric vehicle, and much of that additional cost could be borne by the state, you know, that might, might be something to consider in the future. I will maybe have conversations with Ms. Garrison to better understand what limitations might exist on that, so we, in the future, have a, a greater understanding of what our options might be.
Yeah, and, and I believe just as we, just as I purchased for the county, we try to do everything on contract. In this particular case, there is no electric, all-electric minivan. And CYS kind of depends on these vehicles. Some of these vehicles go six, seven hours away to take kids to visit their family, to, to visit their mother and father, you know, all over the state. So we try to make sure that we have the correct vehicles to do those trips. And there again, in, in the case of the minivan, there is no all-electric vehicle option right now that's on the, any kind of state contract. The state contract there again, CoStar's state contract, that makes it a lot easier for the government, you know, to, to purchase.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hudek? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number 13, as is his want, I will let Mr. Bierling read off the agenda item, and we'll turn to him now.
Thank you, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm here today to ask for the approval amendment to contract number E62320 between the County of Delaware and Road Con and Corporate, 902 Camaro Run Drive, West Chester, PPA, 19380, to conduct preventive maintenance for Bridge Number 16, Station Road, due to unforeseen conditions in the scope and sidewalk repair, changes in the field, original plans at a cost of $10,419.75, subject to the solicitor's approval. The first part was not planned in extending the paving up the, up Media Station Road. This was done to incorporate a new utility patch that stopped by not extending the paving down. Water could easily infiltrate under the new paving and create potholes. By doing this process, we increased the milling, the tax coat, tack coat, the warm mix asphalt, and line straightening. The second was that we had to change the scope of the sidewalk repair. Once excavation started, we realized that the sidewalk was not as planned, four inches thick, but rather eight to 10 inches thick. Because of this, we changed the scope of the work, and repair went from being a removal to repair to milling the sidewalk and adding a bonding agent and replacing with new concrete. So this is a total of $10,419.75. This is something that, once they came upon it, they contacted us through the engineering outfit, and we went and took a look at it, and we, we kind of agreed that this is the way to go to solve any problems that we were going to have in the future. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bierling? All right, then we will move on to agenda item number 14. Again, we have Mr. Bierling here, and I'll let him, let him tell us what's going on here.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm here today to ask for your approval to extend the current NBIS Bridge Inspection Agreement with McCormick Taylor of 1818 Market Street, Philadelphia, PA, 10103, for a period of up to three years through 3/21 of 2024, as subject to the previous remuneration of the previous agreement, subject to the solicitor's approval. This is a contract between McCormick Taylor and the County of Delaware. This is a contract for our bridge inspections, annual bridge inspections. We have a contract in force at the time with McCormick Taylor, which will expire March of 2021. There's about $475,000 left in the agreement. If we do skin this contract, we will be using the old contract pricing from 2016. Pendat is willing to have us do this. Based on our calculations, the amount of money in the contract, we should have no problem paying for this extension for three years. Pendat would only require my office to send a letter asking them to extend this contract until March 21st of 2024. If at some point, some point, we did run out of money from the contract, we would be required to re-advertise for a total new contract and therefore subject to today's pricing. The cost of inspecting a bridge does differ. The cost is based on the type and size of the structure. McCormick Taylor is one of the areas... McCormick Taylor is one of the areas, premier bridge engineering companies with offices in six states. McCormick Taylor has served the county well in the in the time that I have worked here, and they provide good service to our department and our and work on our bridges. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bierling?
Yeah, I'm not really understanding that what the, you said there was 470,000
Yes.
left in the contract, our prior contract?
Well, this is a contract that started in force in 2016. The original contract was for $814,000, I believe. I'll have that exact figure for you tomorrow. We didn't use that because a lot of times they don't know what we're going to be getting into, so there's a sum of money put in there. Now, the way it was explained to me through McCormick Taylor and and through PennDOT in a letter is they could actually, we can actually just extend this contract for an additional three years. There's approximately $476,000 in in money in the contract itself. We would extend the contract for three years, and we would utilize this $476,000, which will be determined by the the amount of contracts we have for bridges coming up for inspection. And this cost is also based on the type and size of the structure.
So the, in theory, if we ended, if we didn't renew, we would not have to pay that 475. It's it's where services rendered, right?
Okay, we're not, we're not going to give them the 475. We hold that. We pay them as they do the bridge inspections. The the caveat to this is we're still under the old pricing of 2016. If we go out for a new contract, we'll be under the auspices of the contract for 2021, which the prices have went up. So what we would actually do is we would, we would utilize the 476,000 dollars we have in force, and we can see what bridges are due for inspection in the next three years. And hopefully, we have enough money. And if not, the only, only thing we'd have to do is go out and re-advertise. And then we will, we would be subject to today's prices.
And are you, you're aware and you've seen the, you know, pricing list of their inspections, and it's competitive and better than we could do today?
I I would believe so, yeah. I I think the, even just the cost of living, if we went over from 2016 to now, we would, we would see some sort of increase. So I would think that their prices are, you know, a lot better than what they would be at 2021. So it doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything to do it. The money is set aside for that. And it it doesn't hurt us in any way. If if, say, in 2023, that money was was gone, we had nothing left, then what we would do is we would actually go out to advertise then. So what PennDOT is saying is use up the 476 on an existing contract, and the prices aren't going to increase.
So why would McCormick Taylor agree to this? If they're, if they are being effectively paid less than what would be their going rate now, what what what, why would they want to do this?
I I would say, you know, I I couldn't answer that question. I'll try and get you an answer for tomorrow's meeting.
Well, I mean, I I I think the answer might be, well, we don't have to go through the bidding process. So, you know, that's more efficient for us. But, you know, that that same line of thinking could suggest, well, let's never bid anything out then, because we could, let's just keep who we're working with now, try to get them to keep their current rates, and we'll not go out and check the market. And maybe that's a good idea, and maybe it's not a good idea, you know. I have, I have advocated that we bid things out, because I think on the whole, that does serve the county well. So if we're going to not bid this out, this hundreds of thousands of dollars of work, and I know that as a professional services agreement under the code, we're not required to do so, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't still do it. You know, I think we need to make sure that this actually is in the best interest of the county. And I'm not sure how we derive such comfort. But I'm willing to learn.
The contract we have in force is still in force from 2016. So, like I said, if we're using the money, we're in 2021, and say for uns, uns, some unforeseen condition that came up, we actually used up that whole $476,000. Then we would be required, say, in in 2023, to go out to bid then. So I I don't, I don't really see a problem. They're they're a pretty good outfit. They they give us the service we need and stuff like that. Are they doing it because we we don't have to bid it out? It's, I'm sure there's a a difference in the wages of 2021 and 2016.
All right, maybe I got confused. And so that the contract is not over? It's not, when does the contract expire?
Contract expires March of 2021.
Okay, so the contract is expiring. So if we did have a bridge that came up in May, and the absence of us extending this contract, it wouldn't, we couldn't do it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember, this is an extension of the performance period, and there's additional scope being added. If it was just an extension of the performance period, I don't think we'd be required to bring it back to council. Because there's a change in scope that's associated with it. That's why we're asking for council approval of it, because when council approves a contract, it's for a certain scope work for a certain amount of money. I think I will talk to Mr. Bierling. We can get a an estimate, I think, of what a comparative cost would be today. And I think that would address the concern that council has. So, Jackie, and I can talk this afternoon.
I appreciate that.
I could tell you that that it's, I'm going to be a hard sell on this. We have a, we're giving a no-bid contract for hundreds of thousands of dollars to a significant donor, to a political party. And that is exactly the things that I ran against. So, you know, I I don't, I don't see the wisdom of not bidding this out. If they turn out to be the winning bidder, you know, I'm okay with that. But but I'm not okay with giving a no-bid contract for hundreds of thousands of dollars to a big political donor.
Okay, we're, we're asking for an extension of a contract.
It's effectively the same thing.
I I know. And I have reached out to one of the principals at McCormick Taylor, who said he will supply me with a list of their donors who they give to. And they actually give to both political parties, is the answer I had gotten from him when I questioned him.
Have we done?
Yeah, that doesn't make me feel any better.
I'm just saying. No, I'm just saying.
Whether he gives to the Republicans or the Democrats, that's, that's not the issue to me.
No, I I understand that, but I'm just saying, I didn't want to, want to, I didn't want it to seem like it was all one one.
Mr. Chair, you've asked us to to demonstrate whether this is a best value to the to the county, and we'll do that. I would not want to get into a political discussion. I think the concern about a big best value is a certainly prudent and thing for us to address.
I would, I would also just point out, and I think we sometimes lose sight of this. I I am all for testing the market on all of our services, professional and otherwise. But I would point out that there is, when you're dealing with a professional services contract, which this would be, because it's, it's really the engineering side of these contracts. You know, there's, there's a level of competency and familiarity and you know, to what extent do they do similar kinds of work? I, you know, my understanding, because I did get a chance to look into this during the campaign, is there, you know, they effectively, McCormick Taylor, when they initiated this contract, effectively came in and came to Delaware County, they went to Chester County, they went to other counties, and maybe even, you know, Montgomery. You know, and they pioneered these bridge maintenance programs. So while we could certainly bid out the service, I think it's important to recognize that when we're dealing with professional services and that we are also cognizant of it is not just the cheapest is the best. Sometimes you want experience and other things, and I think we have to trust. I I I welcome sort of the the best value approach that Mr. Lazarus is talking about. I think it is prudent. But I also think that when you're talking about professional services, it it's not always apples to apples on a comparison. And so to bid it out, you really are asking for a request for qualifications. Yeah, so I just, I just wanted to to note that for the record, because it is not just simply a matter of bidding it out.
Well, certainly. And that was sort of, I didn't go into that, but that's embedded. This is not, we're not buying toilet paper. I understand that.
And I, you know, in my limited experience, in my day job, we own a couple of bridges. And it's, it's a competitive market, engineers that do bridge inspection. I I'm not sure that it's so niche anymore. So, you know, I I I really would appreciate some assurance that we feel like this is a, we're getting value out of this contract and that we couldn't do better elsewhere.
And and McCormick Taylor has had this business for a while, is my understanding. I I just think, as we've talked about elsewhere, you know, putting aside all the sort of political donation stuff, it's just best practice to make sure that you have, you know, the best provider of services from time to time.
Anything further on agenda item number 14? All right, we'll turn to Mr. Bierling for agenda item number 15 then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, the next agenda item is actually one of my favorite that I like to bring before council. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm here today to ask for the approval of a change order deducts for contract E 060620, County, County Bridge Guide Rail Project at various bridges, to reduce the original price of $120,830 by $1,962.50 to a new amount of $118,867.50, subject to the solicitor's approval. This is a project that we had received approval to to advertise for bids in June, on June 3 of 2020. This is a project we're trying to get done for a while, and we combined four bridge guide rail improvements on four county bridges in close proximity.
This is a $2,000 decrease to a contract. I don't think it's really deliberate.
That's, it's, yeah, it comes down to 1,962.50.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
All right. Any questions or comments from council? All right, then. Thank you, Mr. Bierling. I think that'll do it for this morning.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number 16, which calls for the approval of a lease agreement for Building 7, the Northwest Wing at Fair Acres, and we have Mr. D'Amico here to present this.
Yes, good morning, council. This lease is for the, our unoccupied space in Building 7, our north northwest unit on the Fair Acres campus. This lease is a short term. It'll be for four months at a rental cost of $52,533.25 per month. This lease came about when Crozier reached out to me about requests for vacant space due to the rising COVID-19 numbers of patients being hospitalized. Crozier Hospital decided to search for satellite locations to move certain departments in order to create a space to handle the influx of the COVID-19 patients at their hospitals. With council's approval, this unit will be used as an inpatient hospice unit. Fair Acres already applied with the state for a special exception, and it was granted in order to operate, and a lease was discussed between both parties solicitors' departments. As stated earlier, the lease is for an initial term of 120 days with hopes of a possible longer-term lease to generate incremental revenue and make a wider range of services here at Fair Acres.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. Any questions from council?
I have a couple of questions. There's some reference in the lease to terms of a separate contract for psychiatric housing or services that Crozier provides. Is that?
For, I think it was since 2014, we have rejuvenations, which is a Crozier company. It's a very similar lease. So I think that's the reference, that it's similar to that lease. It's the same lease. They've been here for six years. We are the landlords here out of Fair Acres. That is just another service. Crozier owns it. I provide them housekeeping, laundry, food service, and rental space to the unit. This will be very similar. That's the only reason it's referenced. It's referenced that the lease and the cost are similar to the square footage and the expenses for the services.
And staffing is completely their responsibility?
Staffing is completely their responsibility for care to the residents. However, the housekeeping, the food service, and the laundry services, and if anything breaks on the wing, our maintenance department would be handling that.
Okay, and is this space, it's about 20,000 square feet, is it just currently unoccupied?
Yes. It's a vacant wing that became vacant due to COVID and shuffling residents around on campus.
Mr. D'Amico, and how many beds are in this, this vacant area?
They are going to be utilizing 20 beds. I think the unit houses 34 beds. I will get you a more accurate number down there for that.
Oh, okay. And the initial term is is three months.
It's four months.
I'm sorry, four months. The, is there, have we had conversations about extending that? Is that what, do we have expectations as to whether or not this is just a trial that would ultimately end up in multi-year or or?
We are, yes, we are hoping that that there is an extension moving forward. That was always our goal, to get an inpatient hospice company on our unit. And this just happened to be coincidental that they were looking for a, an opportunity. I have been approached by other, other entities of Crozier Hospital about moving out here.
Okay. But presumably, if we lose 33 or 20 beds, we still, those are still licenses that we have. Where, there, do they need those licenses to operate here?
They, no, the, this is an acute care hospital. So I guess to answer your question, it goes back to our bed sale. These beds will be excluded. The, these beds are in that number that I would plan on getting rid of in the future with the sale that was passed at prior council meetings. Does that answer your question?
I mean, again, yeah, that's not the question, but it was getting to the gist of it, which is to wonder, in the bigger picture, do we have more beds than we can utilize at Fair Acres? And if so, what what do we do? We've talked before about the fact that when we have underutilized bed licenses, that impairs our collections from the state because of the formula they use. And so there was a notion that if we had a certain number of beds that were not being used, we would sell those, those bed licenses. And and I guess the, once those bed licenses are sold, we don't actually sell the physical bed or the space itself. And we would be using that newly freed up space to bring these folks in as a tenant and to provide hospice services for the residents at Fair Acres or anybody else at Delaware County, too.
Yes, and to answer your question, I I do think after evaluation, we can decrease more than our original, as I said at the prior meeting. But that is a discussion that we'll have to have at council. I have a number in my head, which is the, let's just say, the sweet spot at Fair Acres. But we will need to discuss that further about what options we have if we decrease more, more bed size than the original 100 beds that we sold.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, thank you, Mr. D'Amico.
Okay, thank you.
All right, agenda item number 17 calls for the approval of a grant between the County of Delaware and the Intercommunity Health Department for the Beloved Mosquito Born Disease Control Program. We have Ms. Devlin here to talk about this.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of council. I'm here to ask for your support of this grant. The DEP provides this grant every year. The county has had a longstanding, you know, run with this grant, it's over 20 years that we've received this funding from the Department of Environmental Protection. So we're asking if your support allows us to continue our, like I said, our mosquito surveillance as well as tick surveillance throughout the the spring season, starts up in approximately April and runs through October. And this provides the staffing for this, for a coordinator and two technicians to provide the services that we, you know, we really do the surveillance throughout the whole county. And it provides the the staffing as well as the supplies and the vehicles for the program. So we're asking for your support, and it's an amount of 156,508.51.
Laurie, is this any change in terms of structure from last year? I know we we've moved away from Penn State because they ceased to do the program.
Right, it really had, no, it's the same structure as last year. The funding is a little bit less, but we actually were able to pay off. We we purchased three trucks for this program that the DEP did reimburse us for. And so we were able to get the full reimbursement in the first three years. So we've gotten it back. So this, you know, this grant's a little bit less, but that, you know, because that's paid off. But yes, no, there's no change. The coordinator and the two technicians, the two technicians are seasonal. So they'll start up in April and, you know, run through the end of the season. And the coordinator is on staff all year round. So he is doing other work for the county, really, you know, continuing the West Nile support, you know, with questions, tick surveillance, and then also spotted lantern. You know, that's been a big issue with the county as well. So he takes care of a lot of that, you know, the questions and going out and looking at areas that, you know, that need treatment and and abatement.
Uh, not to get too off topic, because it's, I don't think it really is, and we're at record pace here on this meeting. So maybe we've got the bandwidth. Um, is there, uh, when you say spotted lantern fly, is there any discussion with the state for them to provide more resources to specifically combat that?
I can look into that. That really goes through conservation, that one particular, um, you know, the spotted lantern is really something that, um, conservation has really overseen that program for the county. I know there was some funding, um, in the past years that they, that the county has received in partnership, um, with the state. And I think it went through, um, also Penn State, I think, was, you know, um, one of the partners. So I can look into that to find out. But through this grant, no, it is not, there's no funding for spotted lantern in this grant. Just so happens that the, the coordinator that I hired, um, years ago, has a lot of experience with spotted lantern. So he has, you know, good background. So he's a good resource. And so we're more than happy to, you know, to share that with the county as a resource. But, um, as far as the funding at this time, it's not, it's not funded under DEP.
Got it.
It did, it did go through, um, the Conservation District this year and they, we had two, a program in two parks. Uh, and I think that's an annual thing. So, uh, we'll, you know, do it again next year and, and follow you.
Good. And I know Chad's in touch with Conservation, you know, whenever they have any questions, he's, you know, he's actually gone out and met with residents and, um, with different municipal, you know, public works departments, if there's areas that they want him to look at. So I know he's in contact with Conservation. Any other questions?
It's my line. But any other questions?
Sorry.
All right, thank you, Ms. Devlin.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda number eighteen. This calls for the approval of the Tax Closion Department's request for refunds. Anything of notes? Um, Mr. Martin, we have lost Mr. Martin. Maybe we haven't. We've lost his picture, but we can, uh, put that on pause for a second.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Let her back.
At, at the moment, you were getting ready to call me. I got an email answering the question related to this, but it'll have to wait for, uh, tomorrow, tomorrow evening. There are eleven items totaling fifteen thousand dollars and change. There is one that stands out, which is a refund of over eleven thousand dollars in connection with a raid aid on West Chester Plank and Edgemont. And, uh, when I receive the email that came in four seconds ago, I'll know exactly what that relates to and I will share it with you tomorrow night.
Thank you. Any questions from council on this? All right, we'll move on to agenda number nineteen, which calls for the adoption of a resolution designated persons authorized to sign checks by members of county council, Ms. Phillips, our county controller, and James Hackett, our interim treasurer. Um, I'm not sure who's presenting this. Mr. Martin, are you prepared or Mr. Lazarus?
Mr. Chairman, this relates to a request from TD Bank for, um, the county clerk to uh, confirm a resolution of authorized, uh, county signatories on one of the county's accounts. Uh, and, uh, because Mr. Hackett is serving as interim treasurer, prior resolutions in this regard uh, did not include him. So, uh, it will request, the, the resolution request will confirm the, uh, prior authorizations of, of the members of council, the controller, and Mr. Hackett as interim treasurer will be at it.
Makes sense. Any questions from council? All right, the next agenda item calls for a request by the controller's office for the payment of current bills. Any, uh, questions or comments from council on that list? The next agenda, agenda item then is communications from the executive director, Mr. Lazarus. Oh, I think you're on mute there, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do not have anything right now.
All right, uh, solicitor's report. Anything, Mr. Martin?
No, sir.
Man. Um, all right, we will look for public comment then. If ever we had time, this is the time. Ms. Ruth, or do we have any, uh, comments that you're aware of? You're on mute. If, uh, we can't see you, not, I can't hear you either.
Where is Delaware County? Are they all out playing in snow right now? I feel like they've abandoned us.
Uh, I just missed, Mr. Zadik, just give me a second here. I am checking our, uh.
Uh, fair enough. You're on the phone, so you have to multitask with your phone. Makes sense.
I do, I do. Bear with me here.
Ms. Schaefer, this will be the time to, to swoop in.
You know what? I am actually going to ask her to do that because my phone rebooted and I lost my X. I have to add, rebound, add back in those other mailboxes.
I think Ms. Schaefer's unable to do that. Uh, she's.
The last comment we had received in the public mailbox was from one, twenty-four.
Okay, so we have no public comments today. All right, any, uh, comments from council then? I will just note the, the, the record pace of this meeting. Uh, this is hours, like an hour less. So that will, uh, we have plenty to do on council. We'll use our time wisely and, uh, if nothing else, we can all shovel snow.
I, for one, applaud the efficiency of this group.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Yeah, that's all right. See everybody tomorrow night.